Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I'm sorry. Good morning and welcome to the Thursday, November 20th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. It was certainly nice to hear a large group of people pledging allegiance.
Don't you want your 4-H boy to come and help you?
He delegated at Lori.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He gave, he, Lori, he gave the job to a woman.
It'll get done a lot better that way.
I'm from Keystone.
Our featured dog?
Oh, our featured dog is, um...
A lab mix?
Yeah, a lab mix. And, um, he's a male. And, um, this Saturday at 3:00, he'll be off for adoption.
That would be a good job.
Okay.
Stop by our dog kennel and get a great dog.
And we told Megan when we gave her that job that she would do all the talking. That's the only reason she agreed to it. Today is Youth Government Day. Like to welcome all, and we're going to ask those in the audience, we're going to introduce our compatriots here, and then we're going to ask those in the audience who have students to come to the microphone and introduce them as well. So if you come up, be ready. You've already met Megan Brumke, who's a freshman at Keystone, and she's my shadow for today. Commissioner Lori, again.
There you go. You can have that microphone.
Oh, I'm special?
Yeah, you are. My shadow came back this year. He hasn't been gone long, so.
Hi, I'm Matt. I go to Oberlin High School and Lorraine County Community College. I'm a junior. That's about it.
And involved in 4-H, heavily, like all the Brumkes.
Oh, like 11 years.
I'm Heather Paddockey. I'm a sophomore at Amherst, and I'm with Lori.
Okay, I didn't see anybody coming to the meeting.
What are you doing 4-H, Heather?
I'm sorry.
I show minis.
Minis? Mini horses?
Oh, you picked the right person.
I'm jealous.
Katie Keys, where are you? You introduced, come on to the microphone and introduce the new treasurer today who's going to write some checks for the commissioners.
Can we just pass the microphone around like we do now? Well, come on down.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the chief deputy treasurer for Lorraine County. Our treasurer for day is Craig Lupinski, and he is from Keystone High School.
Welcome, Craig, and Katie. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Philip Figler, and he is with Columbia High School, and he's a freshman.
Welcome, Philip, and Marty from our solid waste department.
Hi.
Good morning.
My name's Olivia, and I am a sophomore at Oberlin High School, and I've been in 4-H about four years. And I am with the solid waste management for today.
Good, Olivia. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, commissioners. Ron Mazzmann, Lorraine County Engineers Office. This is Matt Metzger. He's from Keystone, grade 11, 4-H member. He features turkeys in the past at the fair. He is also a writer, and he's in wrestling. Creative writing, correct? Sorry about that. Okay, and Marty, welcome to, say hello.
Hi, I'm Metzger. I'm from Keystone, and I'm a junior.
Thank you, Matt, and Ron. Any other 4-H students here today? We welcome you all. We hope you enjoy your local government day. A thought for today, which I found very appropriate already, as Teresa and I discussed it, always keep your words soft and sweet, just in case you have to eat them. Madam Clerk?
At 10 o'clock, we're going to have a public hearing on the Roth Ditch Columbia Township under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions, as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional line of commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a number of potential new hires I want to discuss with regard to hiring transit here in the admin building, and also in receipt of a fact-finding report that needs to be discussed. It's part of our labor bargaining situation, and we'll need to review that and decide a course of action on that. Both of those topics are permissible under the sunshine law, and I may have one or two other things I'll modify under my business if I need to. Thank you.
Well, just a comment, Jim. I've got to be in Columbus 1 o'clock for a CCAO meeting, so I'm out of here by 10:30. So depending on how long Roth Ditch goes, I may not be able to participate in executive session.
We could hold it and carry over any action to Tuesday.
Okay.
We could work it out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just got to make that mean it's our action plans for the end of the year for the new legislature coming in.
Approve and waive the reading of the same Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for November 13, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an enter of professional engineering services with Kane McCarty in the amount of $27,350 to provide the necessary engineer to study, design, and coordinate the removal of said infiltration, inflow for Ene Homes, Brentwood Lakes, Westview, Plum Creek, Columbia West River, and Crest Haven wastewater treatment plant, and authorize county administrator execute on behalf of the board of prosecutors approved as to form.
Mr. Cortez, would you like to comment on this, please? Item number 11. You have to turn your page on the top of the next page.
It's just additional work that we need to do. I really hadn't had a chance to talk to Mr. Carney on it, but, you know, we have ongoing work and maintenance that we're doing on the package plants, and I'm comfortable that we need to move forward with that, Commissioner.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
No.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve and enter contract with Maximus for the 2008 indirect cost allocation plan in the amount of $17,500.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an enter agreement with Frank Seringer and Chaney Inc., Amherst, to conduct an audit in Lorraine County Regional Airport in the amount not to exceed 5,000, and authorize county administrator execute on behalf of the board of prosecutors approved as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under children and families, approve the modification of the subsidy agreement with the Department of Health and Commissioners, administrative agent for and on behalf of family and children first counsel. Said modification reflects reduction in funding from $260,335 to $247,460, and delete attachment one effective July 1, 2008 through June 30, 2009. This will provide services for expectant parents, newborns and their families, infants and toddlers at risk for or with developmental delays and disabilities in their families.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize various personnel in Job and Family to utilize agency's credit card for the year 2009 in the amount not to exceed 4,000 for work-related items to include conferences, food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil, minor vehicle maintenance, and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under workforce development, approve an enter contract with Lake Point Health Center in Lorraine for vendor training with incumbent worker funds. The amount requested is $72,870.04 with employer contribution of $44,135.04, and incumbent worker training funds in the amount of $28,735. Authorize county administrator execute on behalf of the board of prosecutors approved as to form.
I see Mr. Graves has some comments for us. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, members of the board. We have with us today Lake Point Health Center, who is going to be doing a small variety of training with us. They have put in for some customer service building patient loyalty training for their staff, innovative cross-training with STNA program, LPN IV certification, and certified medication aid. And so with us today, we have Sue Doherty, the executive director of Lake Point Health Center, and Dennis Waite, who is the human resources manager. Sue?
Good morning. Thank you for inviting us. I do appreciate the opportunity you've given Lake Point and the employees of Lake Point in order to further their education and their knowledge in their field. As you well know, medical healthcare field is not a career, does not have a good career ladder, and so this gives us the opportunity to develop skills within their areas of expertise in LPN to become an IV-certified, trained individual, state-tested nursing assistants to become med techs. And so that develops their career ladder a little bit further in their specific area of expertise, and I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, commissioners. Good morning, and I especially want to thank Don Graves and the Project 10 group. They were very helpful in guiding us through this process. We do see this as a great opportunity, and we will use the funds wisely in making Lake Point a better healthcare facility, especially with our person-centered care model with the STNA training. We're looking forward to this opportunity to really change the healthcare model, which currently looks at a unit such as a Alzheimer's unit, that this will give us an opportunity with person-centered care to look at the individual needs of each resident. A unit model, the healthcare model currently in place, might have meal times all at the same time, or bedtime all at the same time. With person-centered care, it provides STNA training to allow other employees to perhaps provide a meal to a resident that doesn't normally eat breakfast at 8:00 a.m. or go to bed at 9:00 p.m. So STNA training will give us that ability to do that, to be able to look at a whole different model. So again, we want to thank you, and we look forward to using this grant.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
That's it, Don?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming this morning. I'll move for approval. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just going to make comment. Great organization, and I see Project 10's working. Don, fine job again. Keep bringing in companies, and that's what it's all about. Let's use those federal dollars up 100%.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize purchase 21 vehicles from Paul Simon's Chrysler in the amount of $365,741. Eight bids were received on October 31st to either purchase or lease said vehicles. This was most responsive, complying with specifications of the best interest of the agency to purchase.
Mr. Ennis? Did you want to comment?
You know, they used to send me a student, but the last time I had one, I asked her, it was a young lady, I asked her to help me out with her questions, and then they stopped sending me students anymore. Commissioners, you notice there are lower amounts for the lease bids, and after some discussion with Children's Services, the leases would be for three years, where they're figuring the purchase price would last them five years. So after making their valuations as to what would be involved with the leased vehicles and the purchasing, they have determined that the purchase would better suit their needs. So that kind of explains the differences between the totals that you see for the leases. There is about an $8,000 discrepancy between the lowest purchase bid and the bid that they have selected. Dr. Crow indicates that the lowest bid did not meet their specifications for when they want the vehicles delivered, and that would cause some additional problems for them. So because of the fact that that bid does not meet their timeframes, they decided to go with the second lowest bid there.
Thank you for researching that matter on our behalf. I move that we approve the purchases as detailed in item number 17, including the letter that was submitted by Children's Service, further expanding on their reasoning for purchase.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Coroner, approve an enter lease agreement with Arthur H. Clark for office space utilized at 5 South Main Street, Oberlin, by the Lorraine County Coroner, effective January 1, 2009 through December 31, 2001. The years 2009 and '10 will be $1,275 per month, and 2011 and '12 will be $1,350 per month.
Is there a cancellation clause in this agreement?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
The coroner's...
I actually asked that question. I didn't get it answered. I hadn't seen a copy of the lease. So I did speak with Sandy, and it may be in my paperwork, but I can't correctly answer that at this point. So why don't we just wait until next week on that?
Want to hold it for a week then, until we see the lease?
Please.
Under the Engineer, adopting a retirement incentive plan for Lorraine County Engineers' Office, this is two-year buyout with 17 employees that will be eligible at a cost of $1,330.72, saving of $1,448,418.06.
Mr. Cortez, you were going to...
I have, and I reviewed the numbers this morning, and, you know, these things are always difficult because you don't know the exact employees that may take the option of the buyout. There is a group that's targeted, and there's a limited number within that group that will be taken under the program. So it all depends on who applies and then what the seniority is, because it runs by seniority. If the positions are not replaced over the two-year period, there could be a potential million four in savings.
Well, actually, I got to dispute that, because I met with Engineer Carney this morning, because I had a question on the cover letter that he was changing. Just so we have some clarification, I gave it to Ron. The first buyout, though, only allows 10 and then possibly two more, not a total 17, correct? Ken, just so we get explanation on the buyout?
That's what I said. That's why I said there's a limited, there's a pool of potential candidates, but there's a limited number that can be taken by seniority. I just didn't give the exact number.
But his 17 employees would be the 1.36. He's thinking it's going to be closer to $1 million if we get the total 12 in. Ken, is that what the, hey, just a clarification I needed, and Ron had that we were working on this morning. It's a great program. I just had to clarify from front page, the third page that I understood.
The only thing, the only thing that could be at issue is if the positions are replaced, then the savings won't be there.
If the positions are replaced at a lower salary and/or hourly rate, there's savings...
If they're replaced at a lower salary, it still wouldn't, it would have to be significantly lower, because it would not offset the cost of buying the retirement time.
Okay, then are you suggesting just doing away with these positions, Mr. Carney?
Before we go any further, I need to reclusive myself from discussions and also voting on this issue due to a possible conflict of interest, so I'll just be quiet.
Give another $20 from you for the rest of us. Bye.
Should I leave?
Yeah. I think that'd be appropriate, Lori. You can leave your 4-H student here, though. She can vote.
She can vote.
Good morning, Mr. Carney.
Good morning, commissioners. No, the answer to your question, there will not be any replacements.
You're going to do without 10, 12, or 17 employees, whatever the number is.
I suspect they'll be closer to 10, but I do have an additional two. But by law, 17 qualify.
Okay. That was the part I didn't understand.
Exactly.
17 qualified, but only 10 to 12 are actually going to participate in the plan of savings. Okay.
Based on those 10, you're correct, Mr. Kayla. The savings is $900,000, with an expense of $830,000.
Yeah, I just need some clarification. Thanks, Ron. We took care of that, though. Thanks for working with me this morning.
I didn't bring my calculator. I was stuck in the back, adding these numbers.
Sorry to have grabbed you there.
That's all right.
Off guard. I just had a couple of questions on that, because we don't do it on this side, and yours, it's on the motor vehicle gas tax side, which is, you know, reserve dollars only for that program.
There is no general fund in this program. It's a total motor vehicle gas tax 100%. I do not intend to bring people in to replace these people. Doesn't work if you do.
Thank you. That's, that was my only comment on that. I've done these before when I wasn't with Lorraine County, and if we replace the bodies because of the cost to buy them out, even if they're replaced at a lower, a lower level, it normally will not produce the savings.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think it's a great program. It's a good way of thinning, sometimes thinning the ranks a bit when we're getting to lean times, so.
Good.
Speaking of lean times, you're absolutely correct. It is lean. I am not general funded, and my license plate's income has been flat for five to six years, and recently we've received 4% less gas income, and we expect that to be decreasing on a steadily basis. In 2010, you'll have electric cars. Hopefully, there'll be some money there for me on a license plate, but we'll see what happens on that. We're losing money every year.
Yeah, I saw the dip out.
Every year.
County engineers are across the state. It's a major problem for the engineers, especially with our five in the Wacko, they've all spoke about it, on what the dropping is. Cairo County's extremely large drop off.
Absolutely. And dovetail on that, I was down at Columbus a few weeks ago with the O-Tech, and regardless of the federal money that could be available, there's match involved. If you don't have the match, you're not getting the 80%. So we're saving right now for the match.
You do a nice job, Mr. Carney.
Thank you.
Okay, this is what you want, huh? Ken, this is what you want. This is your request, and this is what you want. And I reiterate that you're not going to replace these employees, because I had replacements for you. I was going to recommend. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye. Come on back, Commish. Come on back.
Mr. Cortez, county administrator?
Jim, before you start your report, can you take care of these first for discussion? The appropriation, the account transfer, and the advanced fund transfer from the Justice Center to stabilize the budget since we're not doing any more work there?
Thank you, Commissioner. What I'm asking the board to do here, and I have individually discussed it with each member of the board previously, but in a limited fashion, is I would like to exhaust some of the retained savings in our Justice Center construction account. We had a very successful build a few years ago, and we were able to bring the project in between 12 and 15% in some areas on the budget. We have retained that fund. We had some various work that we did that we were able to accomplish because we had the savings and didn't need to do additional borrowing. The fund currently has about $4.9 million in it. With some thinking a few years ago to save money, to reconfigure the courts if we went to family court, because we needed construction money there. We have a bunch of security needs that we're eventually going to have to deal with that have been handed down from the State Supreme Court with regard to courthouse security and things that may need to occur in the shortly into the future. And also, there was some talk of cracking the 5th floor with the expansion that's going on, possibly reconfiguring some of the courts with common police, and we would need all, we would need money to do that. The last time we put a courtroom in, it was like $850,000 to do so. But currently, I think that the money would be better served coming back to the general fund. We're going to have a carryover that's going to be below $7 million this year. As predicted going into the year, we're in a negative spend of about $7 million for the year. It's accelerating. It's not getting any better, and we're going to need those funds to stabilize the carryover to be able to open up for 2009. Even with that, we're going to require significant and steep cuts in county spending, because revenue is flat, expenses are going up, and most of them are inflationary expenses that we can't control. So I think that this money is going to be necessary to shore up some of the county operations going early into 2009, and the other issues with regard to the Justice Center are just going to have to wait. I've only asked you to bring back $4 million at this point, because we have curtain wall work that needs to be done. I'll need availability of fund certificate to do that. It's probably going to be about $800,000. I believe we'll recoup that money in litigation. Our attorneys are working on that. We're with the bonding company. I'm comfortable that, like most of the issues we have resolved over the last few years, we will see that money come back to us because of some shoddy work that was done, and we've never released the contractor or the bonding agency from having to fix that work. But we have to have the money. We have to go do it, and then we have to go back and get it, so we'll need that money in that account to do so. This is, removing this money from that capital account, bring it back to the general fund is allowed, because we advanced so much money into the project early on that we had advances that exceeded what we said we were going to pay with regard to cash position on the Justice Center. And so we're able to do that. Counsel and I have talked about this off and on several times throughout the year. I believe you're comfortable with that also. Counsel and I have talked about this off and on several times throughout the year, I believe you're comfortable with that also. I've also received a letter from our bond counsel indicating that we could do this. I think it's time to do it. Our numbers from the carryover look a little bit stronger going into next year, but let me say this again, nobody should misunderstand, without this, our carryover would probably be about six and a half to seven million dollars, and it started at about fourteen million dollars. And I'm giving you ballpark numbers, I don't have the exact ones in front of me. Things are not good, and they're not getting any better, and it's gonna require some significant shifting and changing. If we have to meet next year, this year's budget, based upon actual expenditures, exhausting our carryover and using this fund, we would still be seven million dollars short.
Correct.
Going into two thousand and nine. That's with.
Ten.
Ten, so, nine.
Nine?
This is two thousand and eight, Commissioner.
We met the same budget, is what he was saying. If we did the same expenditures this year, next year, we'd be seven million dollars short.
Well, that would be exhausting every nickel we had, and with the revenue certificate that we received, that we believe the anticipated revenue going into two thousand and nine. Looks like revenue would be about fifty million dollars, a little bit short of that. With, with the carryover, we anticipate, and this four million will still make us about seven million dollars short, on what we need to get through the year, similarly situated to how we got through this year, and that's not counting inflationary costs or required wages under the labor contracts. Things are gonna get very, very bad, and very, very tough next year, and people better brace for it, and all these departments better be ready for it, because it won't be a matter of, can you help me, it'll be a matter of, we don't have it. And we, if we don't have enough cash, we'll have a lot of, we'll have a lot of problems with our grants, because sometimes you have to fund those and get a drawdown on those grants, CDBG, transit grants, FDA grants, a lot of times, we need cash liquidity to move in and out of those things, so that we can partake of those federal and state dollars. Without the ability to, to advance and front that money, we will not be able to access those dollars. We have to have cash to operate, and we're not gonna be able to get a line of credit with the way things are with regard to financing in, in the nation right now. And even if we could, once we have to start operating on short, short-term lines of credit, our bond rating will go through the floor, if, if we can shore it up as it is. So, that's a, a quick explanation. I'll ask you to make those transfers, we'll start moving that money back to the general fund. As we work on our annual appropriation over the next several weeks, we'll need to know that we have that, and we need to know what balances we may have going into two thousand and nine. And I'm sorry to report such a dire situation, but this is not unanticipated, we have been talking about this for two years, the day is here.
Keep your hands and feet inside the ride.
In essence, we need to cut about ten million dollars out of our budget in order to shore it up?
Ten million would get us very close, yes. And, but that's not gonna leave us a lot of room for any kind of growth or advancement, pretty much stagnate us. But yeah, I would agree with you, Commissioner. We, we definitely needed the whole quarter percent sales tax two years ago. We would have picked up a little extra cash initially, the first few months, probably for about seven or eight months, but we would have equalized. We needed it, I told the media at the time, I went to the visits with the commissioners, I showed all the numbers, we definitely needed it, we could exhaust the whole, within a year, we would exhaust the whole quarter percent. But we weren't able to get the proper message across to, to people. Mindful, that doesn't take into consideration that we still have a pending significant issue with the county jail that needs to be addressed, we will not be able to address expansion in the Justice Center with regard to security measures that will probably be imposed upon us, and the list goes on and on. We, you know, we, our revenue streams have decreased with regard to local government, our sales taxes only increased on average about, be generous, maybe two percent a year or less, but our expenditures continue to accelerate at a greater rate. There was no way that this day wasn't gonna come. We simply asked before we got to critical mass to shore that up, we were denied, rightfully so, in some people's minds, and we have to deal with that. But, but unless something significantly changes, we're, we're gonna have grievous problems. And if unfunded mandates come down, this year, we had to give the Board of Election almost eight hundred thousand dollars. It's not their fault, they didn't wanna do those things, they were told to do those things. If we don't have a cash position and a carryover, where are we gonna get eight hundred thousand dollars? I gotta tell you, Commissioner Blair likes to joke about, you know, find it in your bottom desk drawer, and we've had some fun with that.
In your sock.
In my sock. Well, there's no socks left, there's no cans, there's no drawers, all right, they're all empty, and we've been saying this for the last two years, and maybe now, we're gonna get our message across to people, because it simply will not be there. Sorry to.
Do we need separate resolutions for each of these items?
Lisa?
There's a, two transfers and an advance. Do you give them all the same number?
I can put them all into one resolution.
I'll still move for approval, as outlined. Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Kaskowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Here's your supporting documentation, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Cordez. I think it's ten o'clock, Teresa.
We're gonna have our public hearing on petition request of property owners to clean approximately thirteen hundred linear feet of lay out of the Roth ditch and replace a failed tile from the ditch to culvert number thirty on Mitchell Road. In accordance with section sixty-one thirty-one oh seven of the Ohio Re-OS Code, a notice was given of petition filed with Board of Commissioners on March twenty-eighth. The construction of the improvement is necessary and will be conducive to the public welfare and will benefit the petitioners and property owners in the watershed. The filing is, of course, determined, I said proposed improvement to it, commencing at the southern line of the Stone Ridge Lake East State subdivision, as recorded in volume ninety, page sixteen, Lorraine County map records, at the intersection with the Roth ditch, then southwesterly along the ditch approximately thirteen hundred feet in length to an existing tile, then approximately twelve hundred feet in length along the tile to existing culvert number thirty on Mitchell Road. All cost of engineering, construction, and future maintenance will be assessed to benefit parcels of land. The filing is in nature the work petition for, cleaning the existing ditch line and replacing the failed tile lateral, which are part of the Roth ditch. October first, the engineer estimated the preliminary assessments for cleaning approximately fifteen, one thousand five hundred and thirty linear feet of ditch and replacing existing tile with twenty-four inch storm sewer. This is based on replacing the tile in the same location as existing tile, and cleaning ditch from end of tile to ditch that was cleaned as part of Stone Ridge development. Estimated cost including engineer, legal fees, and the first year of maintenance is in excess of ninety-one thousand. View of the proposed Roth ditch, Mitchell Road, took place on Tuesday, October twenty-first, ten a.m., at the location of the intersection of Mitchell Road and Osborne Road. Resolution oh-eight-seven oh four adopted October second, scheduled this public hearing to be held today, notice was published in the Journal on October ninth. October eighth, the engineer revised preliminary assessments to include Columbia Township Board of Trustees as a benefactor for the public right of way of Mitchell Road. Twenty-seven property owners were notified on November sixth by certified mail, three were returned and resented to the correct addresses. November eleventh, I did receive a letter from Ken, Kevin Kennedy at ten-six-twenty Station Road, which is unable to attend to prior commitment. He understands the problems with the drainage, was willing to work in the past. He allowed for an easement for construction of the ditch on the north side for Stone Ridge development subdivision. His land drains well and will not spend the six thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars on this project, which has no benefit from him and does not want trees removed, and will protect his property rights. He requests another hearing, further discussions are warranted, and he is opposed to this project. Everybody that is here today, if you are gonna make comments, I believe the prosecutor will swear you in, and just state your name and address for the record.
Anyone who wishes to comment, you have a question, comment, whatever, please stand and be sworn in by the Assistant Prosecutor. Doesn't cost anything, we need your name for the record.
Anybody who thinks they're gonna have anything to say, please stand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimonies you shall give shall be the truth, as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Um, okay. All right, first, I think we'll hear from the Township Trustees, Mr. Rundle.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this hearing. I do have two letters hand-delivered to me, that I'll give to Teresa at this time.
Please.
Is one of them Novak? Because I got one from Novak.
Tom Samarian, Novak.
Yeah, I have that one.
And Kenneth and Jacqueline Looner.
Mm-hmm. Those relatives are, those residents weren't allowed, or weren't supposed to be able to be here today.
Okay.
Ken is here, I saw him come in, but Mr. Novak had to work, and he couldn't come, so he wanted me to relay his comments to you. As far as the township goes, we'll go along with the board decision, however you go. And, but the residents are saying that this tile will not benefit them, is the main input that I'm getting. The residents on Station Road, the ones who are paying seven, eight thou, or six, seven thousand dollars, they, they have a problem with stand pipes and things like that, that they won't be getting, it would be a sealed tile, going through their land. None of them advised me that they'd have any problem with easement, but that's our stand at present time. I, I'll be open for any questions you have, too.
Thank you. I don't think we have questions now, but we may later. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a list.
Just to let you know, on these two parcels, they both protest.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. I have a list of possible commenters, and then I will open it up to anybody in the audience. The engineer's office, do you have comments? Because the engineer's office worked with the petitioners on this. Mr. Holtzman?
I would just say, there's a map here that we prepared that kind of, in, in red outlines the watershed of the area that's being.
Oh, you need a microphone, Bill.
It's right in front of you there, too.
Yeah. Bill?
Also, I think we're gonna get a copy of the same map up on the TV. But it basically constitutes a hundred and five acres, that starts at the Stone Ridge subdivision, and runs kinda like southwesterly across Mitchell Road, and I think there's twenty-seven owners within that, a hundred and five acres. And the project consists of an open ditch that starts with the Stone Ridge ditch, runs across country to a tile that's in this vicinity here, and then there's a closed tile system that's about a thousand feet long, and runs over to Mitchell Road, and then the culvert under Mitchell Road, and it's one board inside. And the project would include.
Still can't hear him. Bill? Bill, you need to speak into the microphone, he still can't pick you up. Sorry.
It's turned off, I've got it on mute, so they couldn't hear us all talking. Oh, you turned it back on?
I did. Unless he turned it off.
I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't speaking.
Yeah, you gotta get closer.
Can you start over on that?
Oh.
I'll be happy to. Can everybody hear me? Okay.
Check the mute button, I just slid the mute over, Teresa.
I think it's on.
Hello?
Oh, that was better.
All right, that's, I'll start over again, it's a hundred and five acres, there was petition for drainage improvements, that the existing drainage in this hundred and five acre parcel consists of an open ditch that starts at the Stone Ridge subdivision, runs cross-country through the woods, and ends at a tile, existing ten and fifteen inch tile, that's somewhere in this area. Then there's an enclosed pipe system that runs over to Mitchell Road, and ends at a twenty-four inch culvert that runs under Mitchell Road. Let me just finish, and we'll get into the comments later. And so the project that's proposed with the estimate that everyone saw their assessments attached to, consists of cleaning this ditch from the Stone Ridge subdivision, which was a, a nice deep ditch that they built with their subdivision. And the ditch will be cleared up to where the tile exists, and then that failed tile would be replaced with a twenty-four inch tile, which is about a thousand feet in length, from, from the end of the tile to Mitchell Road, with a couple catch basins in between. And like I said, there's, everyone within this red boundary would, is a benefactor to this project, so they would be assessed based on the acreage that drain into that system. So that's pretty much a description of the project that's being petitioned today.
Uh, thank you, Bill. Does the engineer's office have a recommendation, or are you just fact-finding, or?
Question, a twenty-four inch pipe, how long is it? Across the street, that's all?
No, it's a thousand feet, thousand thirty-five feet in length.
Five, approximately five years ago, they dug that in, I watched them. They brought twenty-four to the ten inch pipe, and I made a remark to two of the workers, what in the hell are you doing? You can't funnel that into a ten inch pipe. He says, I don't know nothing about it, so. And I think Lori knows me, so when they come out and inspected it, I threw a remark about it. I had to, I was the one with the big dog, the, the rock wire, you were petting.
I think the culvert under the road was replaced with the proper size.
They put a twenty-four to that side of the street to this side of the street. I said, where's this water coming over to our side?
Sir, if you want to comment, you're, you're free to, but we need to have your name, and you need to be sworn in. We're here to hear what you.
He swore in.
You did, okay. Then your name, please.
Rob Santo.
Got it, Teresa? And your address?
Can you come up to the microphone, or, let Bill give you the microphone, so everybody could hear you.
You don't hear me? I'm loud on the fire department, they all heard me.
What is your address, sir?
Sir, your address, please.
One oh seven thirteen Mitchell.
Thank you.
Three years ago, you had me marked, I don't do this, you had me marked for point, oh, point two six. This year, you sent me a thing with the same three numbers, two point oh six. Who made the red lines? How was I to draw in with two full acres or more?
We drew the red line.
Yeah, but how come I'm only involved with a quarter acre three years ago? Now, this time, I heard you guys reach through it, I got over two acres, two and a half acres of mine.
The project was initially ended at the end of the tile, and it was expanded to the Stone Ridge subdivision, so the project.
Was it the same three years ago?
Uh, no. The project has since, the petition has expanded the project to include the ditch always.
We need, Bill, you need the microphone, Bill.
Bill, and, and to the public, here's, here's what we need to do. Comments need to be made at the podium, people wishing to comment need to state their name and their address, they can state their, their concerns, we'll be able to get it into the record. Bill, you can use the mic from there, or you can come to this podium, but yelling from the audience will not be able to be, have a good meeting. So please, sir, if you have more comments, just politely to come to the podium, everybody does want to listen and, and hear your concerns, but we need to do it in an organized fashion. Okay, thank you.
Now, was your question answered? Because this is a different project than what it was the last time. No, you need to come to the microphone, Jimmy's gonna call the sheriff to come and get you if you don't behave. Well, you're right there. Uh, okay. Are you done for now, Bill? All right, thank you. Is there anybody from Soil and Water here?
If I could speak, I invited Nancy to be here today, but she was off ill.
All right, thank you.
She didn't feel that anyone else could represent them, so.
All right, thank you very much. Then we'll go to the part where the real people get to ask questions, so this is for the residents. Any resident who wishes to speak, I'd ask you to come to the microphone, Mr. Niger, and anybody else, line up here, your name and address, your questions, and we'll try to answer them as best we can, and note your comments as well.
Morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Ed Niger, one oh nine three four, Mitchell Road. You were all out at my house not long ago to view the project. I'm here because I'm part of the petition. And the tile in question was put in almost a hundred years ago. We have dates between nineteen twelve and nineteen seventeen, so it's almost a hundred years old, it was the old clay tile, and it's failing. At the time that it was put in, it was good enough, because it was mostly farm fields. Well, now, there's a lot more, there's a lot more houses involved, the capacity has diminished due to age, pardon me. There was, there was, back in the, the ti, the ditch back there, about twenty years ago, it was cleaned out, maybe twenty-five, I've been back there since, there's trees growing in the center of it, you, it's hard to get any kind of drainage. The drainage problem with, there's an eighteen inch tile that was in there, that we had, that was dug around, because it was collapsed and failed, and there were enough trees there that would just plug, plug that tile right up. The ten inch tile that we're talking about is, is collapsing, it's the hundred-year-old tile, it's almost down to nothing. The twelve or thirteen hundred foot swale is in the place of that eighteen inch. We've asked to have, to try and clean or, or repair the ten inch tile, and people didn't want us on their property to do it. The swale system that was put into the Stone Ridge development, I talked to Dave Gill about it, he told me that the county required him to put in a swale system that would handle three hundred acres. We need to get the swale system dug out enough to hook up to that system, so we can get some drainage. The twenty-four inch tile, the, that I'm asked, that the county has recommended, is probably, maybe right now, a little bit overkill, but there is room for development still on our road. So the twenty-four inch tile is probably what we're gonna have to have. The, I know the people here are not happy about it because of the cost. The problem is, is we go forward, the problem's only gonna get worse. The thing is, that this is not just my problem, this is a neighborhood problem. I talked to Bob Gord from the Health Department, he said, if we don't get this resolved, he could put about ten people out of their homes, because of septic water runs into the tile in the front, and down the road, ends up in front of my house, from both north and south, and then has to go across the road. And it's not really my problem to get rid of that water, it's everybody's problem, it's the whole neighborhood. There wa, it's the county water from the, the ditches, it's water from people's yards that drain into the ditches, and it comes down to my house, but everybody seems to think it's my problem. I don't have a problem with my basement being flooded, so they say, hey, I don't have a problem, I shouldn't have to pay. Well, where's the, where do they think the water's going? It's not disappearing up into heaven, that's for sure, eventually maybe, but not now. You've seen the pictures. I think Mr. Kaczynski has, do you have some more? If you care to, his pictures are more on his property, and the next door neighbors.
Well, Ted wasn't present, you had another.
No.
No.
But I spoke to Ted before the meeting started, and he got to see the pictures. We got small lake area out there. So, we'd like to get this, this on the road, I know people are not happy with the money, and that's why they're here, because of the, the price of it. I would really like to see them put the thing out for a bid, and see what kind of real numbers we could get. Because at one time, years, a few years ago, when we tried this, it was sixty-seven thousand dollars, now it's ninety-one thousand. But I think, right now, with this economy, we could really, really get a better price than at any time else. Yeah, I spoke with the engineers, they had a petition in Carlisle Township, they couldn't believe how cheap it came at. So I think if the ninety-one thousand dollars scares everybody, I think we should really try to bid it out, and get some real numbers, because guestimates are scaring everybody. And I don't blame them, it scared me when I saw what I gotta pay. So if we can try to do that, maybe, County Engineer, could you, could. So if we can try to do that, maybe a county engineer, could you...could that happen? John?
I think we have to pass it first before we can go out to bid. We would have to pass it before we can bid it.
Okay, yeah, I know. I just asked to...John, no. My question is, could...if they pass this, could they do that? Right, and just find out whether or not...how much it's really gonna cost.
You'd probably get some unofficial price quotes.
If I may, Commissioner, just to explain the process, if...what these are are preliminary estimates on what we expect the cost to be. If the project goes through, it is bid out, and then depending on what the actual costs are, um, you know, if it happens to turn out to be lower, then the cost, the final assessment would be low. So, just so you understand, these are...
Mm-hmm.
These are estimates based on...
Best guesses.
Right, and I think the engineers tend to kind of...
They put it up there, so they turned...
To cover that, so I think Bill has some comments.
Yeah, this...Bill Holton, I would just say that for the hearings, the first hearing, we tend to be conservative, so we would expect those numbers to come under that number. But, you know, at the early hearings, we try to be conservative with the estimate.
Thank you, Bill.
I have a legal question for you, Jerry. There's gotta be something in the Ohio Revised Code that prohibits somebody from impeding water on a neighbor downstream, whether it be because the ditch is overgrown, or there's a collapsed tile, or something. Is there anything in the Ohio Revised Code that prohibits that? And how do you remedy it?
Well, we've been addressing this issue with the trustees and the Engineers Department for a number of years now. There are a lot of issues as to whether or not, you know, nobody can intentionally obstruct something. And there are a lot of different legal theories that come into play. After all these discussions, this is one avenue that was kind of suggested to try and do the whole thing in one project than to try and do it piecemeal, and perhaps get in a number of lawsuits and that sort of thing, so... Yes, nobody is supposed to block and prohibit drainage. You get into all kinds of legalities in trying to prove just exactly where the problem is, you know, because a lot of this is happening underground, and so it's difficult to kind of prove exactly what is causing things, or where it's obstructing and assessing that cost. So, again, this is at least two, three, four years that these discussions have been going around, and this is an attempt to resolve the problem all in one matter as a total project than trying to address it piecemeal.
So just going in and cleaning the ditch or replacing a tile wouldn't alleviate the problems?
Bill, do you?
I mean, replacing the tile and cleaning the ditch would certainly help. The fact of the matter is that the tile is undersized and failed at various locations, so the best solution would be to replace it with the proper-sized tile and clean the entire ditch, as was petitioned.
Okay. Like I said, I thank you for your consideration. It really is a problem. It's not just my problem. It's the neighborhood's problem.
But you and your neighbor here are the only two people that are having problems with flooding in your basements and yards flooding, correct? Just the two of you?
The yards flooded is one thing. But when it comes to the basement...
Is there anybody besides you and your neighbor over here that have that experience and experiencing that problem?
I can't answer that because I really don't know. There are several people that are not here that I would like to ask to, but they are... but I know that we have a number of them here in support of it. But outside of that, that's all I can answer to you. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Niger. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Edmund Tallos. I am here today on behalf of my father, who is the property owner at 11030 Mitchell Road. He's resided there for over 30 years.
What's his name, sir?
Tallos, T-A-L-L-O-S.
Okay.
I'm also here on behalf of Christine Sermon. She's at 10890, last name Sermon. She could not be here. She asked me to represent her today. Mrs. Dempsey is right behind me. She can tell you her thoughts. Mr. Ralph Santello is over here, also opposes this. He spoke earlier. He's at 10713 Mitchell. Diane Pornachak is here. She asked me to speak for her. She opposes the petition. She's at 10761. Daniel and Lois Vining could not be here today. They asked me to represent them and express their opposition to the petition. They're located at 11142 Mitchell Road. Mickey Rupert is here today, and he can speak on his own behalf, but he's at 11088, and he is also opposed. I also draw the Commissioners' attention to any remonstrances or opposition that was filed via letter, for example, the Kennedy. I believe there are some opposition letters in the file.
Three.
Okay.
Kennedy and...
Buener.
Buener.
I can speak on behalf of my father, who, again, has been there for 30 years. I myself was also there for 30 years. I moved there from there earlier this year. And his problem is not such as Mr. Niger's problem, and there's no doubt that Mr. Niger has water problem in his front yard, and he may have in his basement, but my father doesn't have any water problem. He doesn't have a basement, but he doesn't have any significant water problem in the yard. His front yard does not have any water. If Mr. Niger has a lake in his front yard, our property is dry, no matter how bad, badly his front yard is flooded. Christine Sermon is the next-door neighbor to Mr. Niger immediately to the north, and her basement does not have flooding unless there's a problem with the sump pumps. If the sump pumps go out for power loss reasons, then, you know, she'll have some problems with her basement. But otherwise, these residents that I'm here for or that will also speak do not have the water problem that Mr. Niger has. So the position is that it's unnecessary, this $90,000 improvement. And for example, you can understand why some of the residents 2,500 feet from the beginning of the culvert would also be opposed to it because they're not gonna have any benefit from that ditch that far from the worst part of the flooding, which is at Mr. Niger's property. So I would disagree with Mr. Niger, respectfully so, that this is not a neighborhood problem. This problem is isolated to two or three residents, and the entire watershed should not be compelled to pay for the entire assessment. It's approximately $868 an acre, and we think that's too much. The benefit is gonna...you know, the cost is gonna outweigh the benefit. I think there is basis for the Commissioners to dismiss the petition. I respectfully request that the petition be dismissed because it's unnecessary and because the benefit, the cost outweighs the benefit. I invite those that I have not mentioned to speak before the Commissioners and express their opposition, if that is indeed their position, so the Commissioner hears from all the parties. But the opinion that I've brought here or their position is that the people find it's unnecessary. Mrs. Dempsey can tell you she doesn't have a water problem. You know, she can't bring in pictures with flooding like that that Mr. Niger has. And some of the other residents will tell you that that water, in fact, if it does pool, it also...it does...it does go away. So there is drainage, but there is also an immediate accumulation of water that eventually is alleviated. And as far as Mr. Niger's claim about the Health Department shutting down houses because of water, I mean, you know, we'd like to hear that from the Health Department to be able to rely on it. But thank you very much for hearing my position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jerry?
Mr. Tallos, you indicate...are you here as counsel for those people, or are you just speaking for them?
Well, I am here speaking for them, but if I have to file remonstrances on their behalf, I will do so as counsel.
Okay.
But at this point, I'm representing them just as their representative.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm Phyllis Dempsey, and I have property at 10795 Mitchell Road. I don't have a problem. And one of the guys that put...one of the...the people that petitioned here, they live next door to me, and they don't eat...they have a half acre of my land goes behind them, goes behind the next house. So I don't have a problem, and they don't have a problem. And as far as the water that Mr. Niger has, for like Mr. Tallos said, Mr. Niger's had that for 30 years. There's nothing has changed. When this all came up, Mr. Roth, he wanted...he's the one that started this, because he wanted his property drained so that he could sell his land for more, to build more houses. Well, the Mr. and Mrs. Kavinski...I don't think I'm saying their name right. I'm sorry. But the property that they bought, and yes, they have a problem, but the property they bought, they bought it off of Roth. And like I've stated in the meetings before, I could've bought that land myself, but I wouldn't buy it because it was stayed flooded all the time. It was just water on it all the time. So that's their problem. You know, that's why they have the problem, because they bought a piece of land that water stayed on all the time. So this is not going...and most of your people that's on the street there, they're seniors and stuff, and they're already paying a lot of taxes, and this is just...they don't have the problem, so why should, you know...I don't have any water draining on anyone. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Norman Kowinski. I apologize, I was not sworn in. I don't know if I can speak still.
Oh, Jerry, I'll swear again right quick.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury? I do. And I just wanted to say, we've been out there for 26 years, and as you can see by the pictures I've brought in, and when you were out visiting the site, how bad it does flood, the flooding problem has gotten worse and worse and worse. It's not just something that has been there forever and ever. It's gotten worse. And as far as people not having a problem with flooding, their water does come to our property. They are in the watershed. They are responsible. Otherwise, please alleviate your water elsewhere. I don't know what else to say. If you can't alleviate your water, you know, don't bring it to my property. It gets stopped up there and blocked and can't go through the system properly and needs to be taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Hi, my name's Caroline Kowinski, and I was not sworn in either.
Do you swear affirm the testimony you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do. I just wanna say that if I blocked my property off, that all these other people would have a big water problem. But it all comes down to my yard. Also, I wanna say that I did talk to the Health Department personally, and I was afraid of West Nile virus, which there was a case, I understand, reported in Columbia, because the water sat there for almost two months in July hot weather. I could not wash clothes at my house. I sparingly washed my dishes, and it's just a big problem. It's gotten worse. It used to go down very quickly, but over the years, the tiles failed, and it just doesn't work anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Good morning.
Morning, Ken.
My name's Ken Roth. I live at 10835 West River Road. If you'll notice the sheet with the assessments on it, you'll notice that my assessment's twice as big as anybody else's. I have no front yard. I have no house. I have no basement. I have no septic tank that's affected. However, drainage in this community is...in all of this county is paramount. And unfortunately, my grandfather in 1909, or thereabouts, turn of the century, was the first person to sign the petition that runs from Mitchell Road about two and a half miles to ultimately outlet in Plum Creek. So people think that it's my ditch because that was the first name, and it was named Roth Ditch because of that. So consequently, I'm quite often vilified for some of the drainage problems there that have occurred, as you heard Ms. Dempsey allude to. Unfortunately, some of the residents that are flooded have caused some of the problems, Mrs. Dempsey in particular. I know Lori was inquiring about some of the impacts that this had. I'm aware of, in the last five years, of seven septic tanks that had to be replaced because there was not enough flow out. The septic tanks would be inundated and ultimately fail. Mrs. Dempsey's is one of those. Mrs. Dempsey has property of approximately five acres and has been one of the primary impediments of cleaning the tile that goes through her property. If, in fact, she had maintained that property properly, we probably wouldn't be here today. Mr. Tallos referred to Kristen Sermon. She's another person who had to have a septic tank put in, that's $207,000 or $8,000. If this had been taken care of in a timely manner, those people would not have suffered that economic impact. Now, these are not good economic times, as you alluded to in your own discussion here, nor is it good economic times for any of us, and these are substantial assessments that are being assessed against us. However, I feel they're necessary, and I am willing to support this project, and I request that the Commissioners approve the project and go forward with the project. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions? Thank you, Ken.
Did you say you didn't have a house?
Not on this property.
No.
As you can hear, it's a Roth ditch. My family bought the farm in 1876, and my grandfather was involved in petitioning this ditch across many properties. So I still have a substantial amount of farmland there.
But no house?
But no house. I don't...so I don't benefit directly. The land that I rent, I get 800 bucks a year for. It's not gonna help a whole heck of a lot here with this. So thank you for your consideration, and again, I request that you approve this project.
Thank you, Ken.
Good morning. My name is Ken Beener. I live at 11170 Station Road. You have a letter of my disapproval with this project that I was turned in by Mr. Rundle this morning. I wasn't sure I was gonna be here. Water problems are something we deal with all the time in that particular area. My house faces onto Station Road. The particular piece of property is behind my house that I also own, that is part of the project you folks are dealing with. I've had problems on Station Road with water draining. They've been my problems. I've not asked anybody to help me with them. I did talk to the trustees in the township 20 years ago about how do we get water moving out of here? And it was pretty much, it's gonna be on you. I did the things I had to do on my property to take care of things and move water. I can only do so much. That is how I had to handle it. I feel bad for these people over on Mitchell Road, but I feel it's their problem to deal with, and I don't think I should be incurring any expense for that. We knew that when we built there. There was a water situation, a high water table out there. Most of us took and made provisions to deal with that situation. So I strongly oppose this whole project, period. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beener.
My name's Ed Meister. I live on 10685 Mitchell Road. I also am opposed to this project. I have just a portion of my land that will...that drains, I guess, in that direction. On the very back, our properties are about 1,300 foot long. I have about 400 feet that drains in that direction. I'm being assessed $1,100. When I built my house 30 years ago, I talked to the Health Inspector at that time, and he said, "Because of failure at Perk Test, it wouldn't be possible for me to build and drain my effluent into the ditch." So I ended up laying a pipe into the carpenter ditch, which is north of my property, along the road right away because I couldn't get easements. I had to bear that cost to go all the way, I think it's about 1,300 feet, to drain in order for me to build my house. And that was put on me in order to live there. And now we have...we have people with problems in that area, in that floodplain, and they're asking us to join together and help alleviate... asking us to join together and help alleviate their drainage. They all built on a floodplain, because that's basically, at least from what I get from my insurance, the, um, classified years ago as a floodplain. And I just think putting a twenty-inch, uh, pipe, I think it's on the high side of, uh, um, I guess, for the amount of water that we're going to drain. And I guess, one of the other things that bothers me about this, when we clean out ditches, and we all see the ditch cleaners that, uh, um, expand the ditches because they've slowly filled in, those people aren't assessed that day to clean those ditches. That is a community problem. And the community, as in general, whether it's the government or that, uh, particular agency, comes and said, "That ditch needs to be cleaned so we can clean that, uh, so we can drain that water." I don't know why this local area is being assessed instead of being a countywide project that, that is paid for by the county. That's all.
You had mentioned that you had an alternative, uh, in order to build your house. Do you feel that Mr. Niger has an alternative that he can do on his own to alleviate his problem, like, like you did?
Well, I crowned my house. Um, when I built my house, I also built it up higher, and I have a full basement, and it's relatively dry, and I crowned it very high to make sure I flow both ways. I also had a problem in the back of my property where I had a large standing area, because the, there's a arm of the carpenter ditch that basically starts at Mr. Santillo's property and mine, and it flows north rather than back into the ditch we're talking about. Um, we had a large area, and it was kind of accessible. I ended up putting a pond in there and crowning the rest of my property, because we had a problem. Now it, there's a slight swale through the O'Donnell property going into that ditch northward. And the same thing goes, if O'Donnell decides to, uh, let his stuff grow up, we will not drain again. And it's one of those things that you were talking about, natural flow of the land has to be allowed, uh, to go. But if, uh, if we have natural things, natural trees, uh, growing up there, that has to be cleaned out now. I don't think the, that group that lives in that area should bear that. I think that's a countywide problem, just like any ditch or anything that, that's slowly plugged up in time. We have those ditch cleaners come out and they clean, and it gets everything flowing in. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Any chance, it's Kavinsky? You, you, you guys live across the street from Mr. Niger. What about, like, a little retention basin in the back of his property that would hold the water before it gets to Mr. Niger's property? Is that a possibility? Some kind of retention pond kind of thing that holds some of the water?
It's the other way around.
It's the other way around?
The water flows down property.
Niger's property flows to you?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Niger, could he put in a retention, some kind of retention system?
I think he has one. It's called his basement.
Yeah, besides his basement? No? Anybody?
Bill Holtzman.
Bill Holtzman?
You're the engineer.
I mean, you could always build a basin to collect water. Uh, I don't know that that's the right answer. You know, I, I, it's, it's, it's a potential solution. Um, but, you know, when you get a big storm, a hundred-year storm, you're probably going to overtop that, and you're, and you're still going to, you know, have water backing up, so.
It'll slow a lot of the water down, depending on how big the basin would be.
We'd have to size the detention basin, and then someone would have to pay to have that constructed.
Well, how much is a, a project like that compared to a ninety thousand dollar assessment for twenty-seven residents?
Uh, we'd have to make an estimate. We could do that for you.
Can you do that?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
If they did something like that, and the water retained in a basin, it would probably have to be pumped out after that into the, into the tile so it would flow through, so the retention basin could then be used again in the next year. Otherwise, that's.
Yeah, you still got to move the flow.
Right.
You still have to move the flow.
But it would slow it down.
You have to sew any tile to get it out of it. It still has to be moved.
Sometimes the basins are built with a restrictor, so they hold the water back. They still release it, but at a slower rate, yeah.
Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Rupert. I live at one one zero eight eight Mitchell, and I'm opposed to this project. I don't have a water problem.
What was your name, sir?
Mike Rupert.
Rupert. How you spell that?
R U P.
Oh, R U P, okay.
And basically, it's, the fall of water, water's going to seek its own level. And wherever this water's running to, that's pulling up in Mr. Niger's yard, when the end of the run reaches the level of Mr. Niger's property, water's not going to flow. Whether you put a twenty-four inch pipe in, or whether you put a thirty-inch pipe in, it's still not going to flow. Water always seeks its own level. So unless you have enough fall and a place for it to go, until the end of the line goes down, Mr. Niger's property is not going to drain. And, and anyway, it's just going to sit there. We had torrential rains a week or two ago. We didn't have a flooding problem. Mr. Niger's yard was not flooded. Across the street was not flooded.
Yes, it was.
I drive by, I drive by it every day.
I live there.
I drive by it every day.
Please.
You know, and, and in the spring, yes, we do get, Mr. Niger gets a leak in his, in his front yard. But, uh, Jakeway at the end of the run, and Plum Creek at the end of the run, is flooded up to street level and floods over the street, which my question is, is what is the elevation for Jakeway and Plum Creek in relation to Mr. Niger's yard? So once those things are filled up, until they go down, that water is not going to go anywhere. I don't care what size pipe you put in there. And, you know, it's, it's just kind of, you know, you're kind of beating a dead horse by putting a bigger pipe in. Water's going to take the path of least resistance. So Jakeway floods, and Plum Creek floods, all that water, you put a bigger pipe in and don't put a choke point, that water's going to flow back until it reaches the same level and put more water in his yard. So, I don't feel that, you know, putting a bigger pipe in is even going to help the problem, except it might make the problem worse.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
I wasn't sworn in.
Do you swear affirm that the statements you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Uh, Jim Vigar Sota, one oh eight nine three Mitchell Road. I live next door to Norm, and Norm lives across the street from Ed, and they have a water problem that when Ed floods, his front yard floods, and it goes over to Norm's yard, and it floods, and it crosses my property, which is probably an acre back, and it floods back there. And then eventually the water goes away, and the only reason it goes away is because the failed tiles back there. They snake, I let the township come through and snake the pipe through my property, which it flowed. My septic system, I have no problem. I have no problem with water coming in my basement or anything. But where the water goes into my field, when it eventually goes down, the only reason it goes down is because the tiles, there's all kind of sinkholes back there. That's where all the failed tiles are. If those failed tiles were repaired, even with a ten-inch tile, I have a friend that's a ex-escavady contractor, and he says if they would repair them tiles that are deteriorated to the ditch back there, then the water would flow. So that is the problem. You know, the problem is, it's everybody's problem. I mean, it's not really a problem for me. I don't use that part of my property, but there's a lot of mosquitoes back there in the summertime, and I don't want my grandkids to go back there. I don't go back there. So I think that the problem is, is just replace that tile, you know, just from my property onto that ditch, because that's where all the sinkholes are. All you have to go back there is view it. I'll let you sign my property to view anything you want. And that is the problem. I mean, you know, the, the water has to go someplace. It has to go into a pipe. Well, the pipe has failed. The pipe has to be repaired. I'm just like anybody else. I don't want to spend the money neither. But something has to be done, you know? Whether, you know, the people want to do it themselves, or...
I'd like Bill Holtzman to address that. Is, have you been on his property and, and saw these tiles that are collapsed?
I've not actually been on his property, but, uh, it certainly would be a, a benefit to just replace that tile. I mean, it wouldn't be the ultimate solution. You probably would still have ponding water, uh, in big rain events, because you've got a ten-inch versus twenty-four, but it's not going to sit for weeks at all and drain.
The ten-inch works. It goes away after a period of time. And years ago, it went away. That tile's been failed since I've been there since nineteen eighty-five. And that sinkhole, there's one sinkhole that's been there since nineteen eighty-five. And if the sinkhole wasn't there, then all my property would flood. So that tile, tile has to replace, whether the owner replaces it, or who replaced, because I had a sinkhole by my barn, and I showed it to Ed and John, the other trustee. They came over, they wanted to view it, and I says, "Well, you have to repair it." I repaired it. It cost about five hundred dollars. Okay, I repaired that tile, because I was told that that's what I'm supposed to do by the Ohio Revised Code. Now, if I replaced that tile, why doesn't everybody else have to repair their own? I have it. Have it right here. I don't know if it means tiles, or just, or it means drainage ditches. Now, I repaired my tile like I was supposed to, and it wasn't my tile. It was a field tile tied into the ten-inch pipe that created a sinkhole, and I had it repaired. And we snaked out that, the ten-inch tile, which was fine. Like I say, my septic runs perfect. The health department come out any time they want. I have it cleaned every two years. A lot of people, you know, don't have them cleaned out. But that right there, that's telling, it's the Ohio Revised Code, that if, if you don't clean your ditch out, then the county or the township has the right to come on your property and clean it themselves. Now, I don't know if that means the pipe or not. So you're a prosecutor. You tell me. What's it mean?
Yeah, you, you tell us, Jerry.
I mean, no such thing going on for eight years now. It's time to get this over with.
Well, you're, you're...
Speak up, please.
Tell us, Jerry.
I mean, no such thing going on for eight years now. It's time to get this over with.
Well, you're, you're...
Speak up, please.
Mixing apples and oranges here a little bit, because the problem that exists here is that this ditch was, as, as Ken Roth indicated, constructed years, years ago, and it was constructed as a public improvement. Before nineteen fifty, the law did not have attached to it what we call maintenance. So it didn't, it didn't have an assessment. Uh, the assessment that was done back then was purely for the construction of the, of the tiles, and it didn't have anything in there that provided a ongoing assessment that would allow fund to accumulate to make repairs. The law now, and since nineteen fifty, allows you to add a, a maintenance fee so that it can be slowly constructed and maintained as it goes along. So the problem we have now is that we're dealing with a whole bunch of public improvements that were made, but there was never any fund developed to provide for the repairs of that. So the only way you can now do that is to construct a new improvement and, and go forth with an assessment. Now, that's different than private tiles and private drains that people put through their yards. If you, if you construct a private tile or drainage system, or whatever you do, and that's, that's what they were talking about, the natural flow and so forth, so that you obstruct the natural flow, uh, or do something that, that causes public property, you know, then you're responsible for cleaning it up and repairing those kinds of things. But this particular improvement was a public improvement. Um, again, you can't, you can't plant a tree, or, you know, drive things over this, or, you know, in some way cause, uh, uh, the problem. And if you do, then it's your responsibility to, to fix it. But if it's happening by purely natural causes, uh, then it is not the responsibility of the individual. I mean, you don't have a responsibility to improve a public, uh, it's just kind of like a street. If you go down a street with a sledgehammer and chop it up, then, then you're going to be liable for that damage. But just because you drive an ordinary car and that gradually wears away the road, it's not, it's not your individual responsibility. But again, the, the big problem that we're all dealing with across the county is that the law prior to nineteen fifty did not provide for the accumulation of a maintenance fund. So we have, we have ditches, we have tile systems, we have things out there that were constructed years and years ago are failing now, and there is no fund there to fix it. And so, the issue now is, is, I think what, uh, Mr. Holtzman was trying to explain, and what we've talked about from the years, we can do, continue to do patchwork improvements, but that's exactly what it's going to be. It's going to be patchwork improvements. And, uh, I'm not speaking pro or con, I'm just trying to explain the logic behind how this came about. This is an effort to put in an improvement that will, once and for all, solve the problem of, you know, and I said four years. I know when I started here eighteen years ago, I think one of the first meetings I came to, I heard about the raw tile and the drainage, and, you know, so there's, it's a problem. It's going to continue to get worse. Um, and, and yeah, there are alternatives that are less expensive here in patchwork, but this is just a proposal to everybody of, do we fix it once and for all, the whole system? And that's the proposal, and that's...
Well, it should be fixed.
It has its ups and it has its downsides, but that's, that's the concept.
I got your drift here. But it has to get fixed. I mean, you can't sit up here and talk about it. You have to view the tile. I mean, I'd be glad to let you sign my property to view it. I mean, I'm, I'm for it, for it, but then I'm against it too, because I don't want to spend the money. But it has to be fixed. Eventually, the tile is totally collapsed. I mean, you can walk back there, you can see all the sinkholes, so it's not flowing. Eventually, it's going to be a problem for any, everybody down the line. My septic, like I said, goes into that tile, and it flows fine. I have two back, uh, check valves in there, so nothing's going to back up into mine. But you can, you can see where the tile is bad. I mean, a blind person would fall in a hole. It's, it has to be repaired. I don't know. Repair, maybe that, if, maybe the people don't want to spend the money, we'll repair that section of it. You know, come on my property, and a practice, oh, I'd say probably half of my property has the new plastic pipe they put in about four or five years ago, the ten-inch plastic pipe. Continue on from there. I don't care. But something has to get done here eventually. People say they ain't got a water problem. There is a water problem. You know, really, I don't have a water problem. Little bit in my field, you know, and if this project goes through, I want to catch basin put in there to solve that problem. Now, you have to view the pipe. We can sit here and talk all day long. But there's a, there was a pipe there originally. There has to be a pipe there today, whether it's a ten-inch, a twelve-inch, or a twenty-four-inch pipe.
Thank you, sir.
I, I just wanted to say that I, I, I agree very much with Jim as far as tile goes, but beyond that, it is the ditch that it goes into is nearly filled up, and it's not being maintained. And if that, and that does drain into an area in the new development that does drain quite well, so without including that ditch, we're still going to have a problem. We talked about three or four years ago, fixing some of the tile, replacing some of the tile, but after I walked back there and saw the ditch filled, it's like it's not going to go anywhere anyway. What's the point in doing it halfway?
Do you have a response for that, Bill?
Uh, well, I agree. The ditch should be part of the project. Uh, I mean, you could fix the tile, and if it's totally blocked, then it'll still flow through, but it's still going to back up in the ditch. So, I mean, it'll, it'll make, it'll make an improvement. It'll make it better, but, uh, it won't totally solve the problem.
And this is a county-owned ditch?
No, this is a, well, it, it was improved under the ditch program back in the seventeen, or nineteen hundreds, under a...
But is it a county ditch, or is it a private ditch?
It's a private ditch.
It's a private ditch?
Is that correct, Jerry? Is that how you determine that? It's not a county ditch. It's not under maintenance. It's a private ditch.
It's a public improvement on a private ditch.
Correct.
There was easement under access?
Uh, there are no easements. But if you approve this, uh, petition, then you have a right and easement to make the improvements.
Automatically gives an easement. That's the issues they're dealing with in the cities also on those, Ken, about those.
So if it's considered a private ditch, it is the property owner's responsibility to clean that ditch? Jerry, is that right? Or is it our responsibility, because we put the ditch in in the first place?
Well, if it's a private ditch, it's not our responsibility.
And then if somebody doesn't clean their ditch, what recourse do we have to make them clean their ditch?
If they put a ditch in...
No, we put the ditch in. Right?
Well, the original improvement was a tile, was in...
Tile in a ditch.
With, under a petition, and then at some point in time, it was, some of it was open ditch, and I'm not sure how that actually was done.
Madam Chair, I can explain that.
Yes, Mr. Rundle?
Okay. Um, I would say approximately eight years ago, well, hold it, Kenny was in, twelve years ago. Okay, um, the county and the township... The county and the township went together and opened up the ditch on Mr. Roth's property. He was kind enough to give us, because we had a clay tile, or a tile in there at that time, which was Roth ditch, or Roth tile. And we had a failure there. So we opened up that ditch, and that alleviated a lot of the problem. That was county monies, township monies, together. We pulled together and opened that ditch up. That was a tile prior to that. But that accepted the water from the Roth lateral tile. Not the Roth tile, there's, we're talking two things. The tile that comes from Mr. Niger's property is a lateral. That's not part of the petitioned tile that went in, in 1919. That ditch comes through Mr. Roth's field and then cuts back. The lateral was put in to alleviate some of the drainage prior to that. And one other thing I wanted to say. Mr. Poymon and myself are here to represent the township. Mr. Niger represents himself, not as a township trustee. I just wanted that for the record.
Thank you, for clarification, we appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Roth, round two.
Okay. Thank you for the second bite of the apple, if you will, please. But I appreciate Lori's concern about finding alternates less expensive and the suggested detention basin is unworkable. I was born, I was born and raised there, and if you look at the pictures, essentially, that's what you're ending up with, is a retention of the water because there's no outlet. And the, any retention basin would be higher than, or would be... Well, it, it's not the cost, it's just from an engineering standpoint, it wouldn't work. But as Jerry alluded, along this water course, I'll call it, so I don't get hit, is Mr. Roth with the Roth ditch. It's been a problem for 20 or 30 years. And it's been incrementally addressed. And we've explored alternate, alternate, less expensive solutions. And each time, someone has to write a check, whether it be for $10 or $100, it dies. And ultimately, we've come to this position where this is a, a private ditch on private property that was petitioned back in 1909 or 1917. And the property owners are gonna have to pay for it if this goes through. This is what the hearing is essentially about. And each one will be proportionally charged. I can't address equity as far as how it goes. Someone on a half-acre lot that has a flooded basement and a failed septic tank will pay about 500 bucks. I've got 18 acres.
15,000.
15,000. However, as Dale alluded to, there was a, a repair done that I said, leave it open if you'll maintain it, rather than putting the tile, saved the county $8,000. But unfortunately, it wasn't maintained, and I don't have the equipment to maintain it, so it's starting to silt in again. Further down, 20-some years ago, there was a problem with the drainage, I was farming the land. I got an easement, and I paid the equivalent of $15,000 in today's money. And wrote all the neighbors that were in the watershed, Mr. Niger was there at that time, and said, hey, this is what I've done, this is gonna benefit you. How about a little help here? Out of 20-some people, one, one person gave me a $35 check. So if we don't take action today, or positive action on this project the way it's engineered, we'll be back here every two or three years for the next 20 or 30 years. And as I said, I would like the commissioners to address this and approve it. Thank you.
I have a question, I, I know these, we have two people here that have severe flooding in their yards and in their basements and stuff. And your assessment is five times as much as theirs. Why are you in favor of it personally? What benefit is it for you if you don't have a house there that's getting flooded, or?
At some point in time, I'll have, probably have a house.
Lots for sale.
You wanna buy one, Ed? You bought one once.
I bought it off your aunt, that's right.
Yeah.
For future development, is that what you're looking at?
At some point in time, it'll benefit me, but not to the extent that the people that are already there. The, the people that are already there bought parcels, some of them bought parcels from my father, my grandfather. At those particular time, the infrastructure served well. However, they didn't maintain it. Now we're here, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you know my name, Ralph Santolo. I live at 10713 Mitchell. And like Ed over there, Misner, I have no problem on mine for water. I bought the land in 1971, and I used to take my wife out for a ride on Sundays in the rain. We would drive up and down. And I says, well, we're not gonna build a basement here. Because in front of Niger's house, he wasn't there yet. They had floodwater. Next door to Norm, going east, the guy built this house way in the back about 10 years. It was always flooded, and that would end in Roth's land. Now, he's not living there. Three years ago, we fought Roth, now we're fighting Niger. The water was there ever since I moved in, July. This last July was 35 years. I've walked the dog up that street, up and down, every day of my life, except when I was at the firehouse. And every time it rained, Ranger Shine, I'd come out. Their area flooded. Now, why would you build a house there? When I asked him about the water level, I was a carpenter by trade, and I was a fireman. They told me you had water out there. I built a slab, no basement. Ed built a basement, he used my electric to dry out his basement when it rained, when he was building his house. He ran a line, ran a sub pump. And, and want a basement, God bless you. You wanna go swimming down there, God bless you too, it's not my problem. I got no water in front of me, I got a pond in the back, as far as fries go. I think, God bless them, my fish are eating them. And I fished every day when I was home, I loved it. I catch them, barbless hook, put them back in. And I fed 300 pounds, and I even started to put some in Norm's pond. I fed four different ponds with fish that I caught, brought home, and I supplied everybody. I had no problems with the water. I'm all by myself now, I've been by myself nine years. My septic tank, I have it cleaned out approximately five. And if I go extra, I'll have it take, cleaned out an extra year. But I have no problem with the water, and I'm against it. And like Ed, and Porchak, Diane's here, three of us, and Dempsey's land, I see no water back there. And I mean, the guy's got a problem. And then, like I says, approximately five years ago, I walked my dog up, and I watched them guys put that hole in the ground. And if that's legal, then I can take dirt, like Laura made a remark, I'll overfill my property so Misner gets my water and Porchak gets my water. And I know that's against the law, to run my drainage on their property. So why would you put a pipe in the ground, run your water to somebody else's property, and not take it from there? Two guys stood there, like, I call them mammoths, two dummies. I says, what are you doing? What are you doing? I says, hey, this is what we're told to do by the county or the city. I says, well, that ain't right, you know it. That was approximately five years ago, I had one Dover, not two. And I go, I remember Lori was there, because I was clowning around, and they come over to pet the dog. It's always a good thing, friendly thing to do with dogs, everybody comes to them, especially when they're big. Then I used to tell them, they don't bite, I bite.
Yeah.
And I do.
Is, is your property considered in a floodplain?
It's got, they moved that red line, God, I went from a quarter acre to two and a half acres. They involved me.
I know, but are you in a floodplain? Do you have to pay flood insurance with your homeowners insurance?
No, I don't have flood insurance, no.
Pardon me?
Years ago, it was considered a, a flood area.
That's right.
It's not anymore?
I know, so I think that's been dropped.
That watershed went through my property and grabbed him now. He wasn't involved three years ago. Three years ago, September, you send me a notice, we fought Roth. And Niger was right in front of us, and then he ran for councilman to beat Roth out for that crap. Now, what do we do, have to run against them to beat them out for it?
That's why I got involved in politics over an assessment.
Amazing, no, I wanna make anyone without a headache.
Thank you, Mr. Santolo.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to give you a headache, but it is.
I took my leave this morning already. Sir?
I'm David Kennedy, I need to be sworn in.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Yes. Okay, I own, I live in Homestead Falls, don't live on my property. It's taxed as forest land, it's registered with the state Division of Forestry. I just raise trees on it. This will benefit me absolutely none, it's at the back of my property. I, I feel my assessment's 7,000-something to clean my ditch out, which mine is all ditch along the old tile, which went across the back of my property. I went and looked at it, I've looked at it for 20, 21 years since I bought it. And it's accumulated in 21 years approximately six to eight inches of soil along, in the bottom of it. The reason I know that is because I put in a big chunk of concrete in the center of it so I could get across it to the back, let's say, I got 16, almost 16 acres. The back, I've got about an acre on the other side of the ditch. Mr. Niger talked, told me on the phone that he didn't want that big piece of concrete in there. I went there this summer, back there with a sledgehammer, I beat it up and took it out of there. But at the time, I, you know, I was digging and so forth. And I, I've been looking at this piece of concrete for 21 years. I've got approximately six to eight inches of soil on the bottom of mine. For 7,000, and there are trees on the side of the ditch, which I think is, they're worth leaving there, maintains the soil. But if someone wants them removed, $7,000 is ridiculous. I can, I'll go back, I'll clean it, I'll tell you right now, if, I'll, I'll clean it. Me and a shovel in about two weeks, eight hours a day, I'll do it. Because I've got probably 300 foot of that ditch. And the trees, I, if you want them cut down along the edges of the thing, I'll cut them down. But it's ridiculous paying $7,000 for that, you know, for, in a ditch 15 feet deep, to have six to eight inches of dirt in there to be removed to pay $7,000? It's, it's just, it's ridiculous. If you wanna clean it, I'll clean it, but I'm totally against this. And if I can keep people off my property, I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Excuse me?
I said, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Diane Porchak. My address is 10761 Mitchell Road. And Mr. Tallis spoke for me before. But I wanted to add that I've lived here going on 30 years. We have a basement, never had a water problem, never had standing water. Some of us are on fixed incomes. I don't feel this is going to benefit us in any way. I feel it's very unjust. I just feel that we should not have to deal with this. Also, someone brought up the effect of mosquitoes. Well, we have ditches in the front. And many of us, my next-door neighbor was forced to put their septic out to the front. So my ditch is always filled with water, even when it's dry. And in the summer, there are mosquitoes, but it has nothing to do with the back. And I just want to say I'm strongly opposed to this. And I feel it's very unjust. And I thank you for your time, and I feel you'd be very fair with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porchak. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mike Rupert, 11088 Mitchell. It's one of those issues, you know, you kinda look at these, if I was to come along, everybody talks about this spreading problem for 30 years, 100 years, whatever it's been. And I choose to come along, and I choose to build my house in the middle of the pond. And then down the road, I wanna complain about the pond in my house. And I come to you and say, okay, I want you to drain the pond so I can have a dry house now. I mean, that's kinda where we're at. We're building, they're building houses in what they know is floodplain and what they know is watershed. They're coming along and putting new homes up in these areas. Things that have been problems for years. And now they're coming to us, asking us to pay to fix what was an existing problem prior to them putting a new house in the middle of it. If, if you, if you got a pond, you're not gonna put your house in a pond. You're, you're gonna put it up on stilts, you're gonna do whatever. I came from Florida, so the people building floodplains and Everglades and things like that, they put them on stilts. They're aware of the water problem, they're willing to deal with it. So they make provisions to deal with that problem. So that's, that's kinda, you know, kinda the issue we're dealing with here. You know, if I chose to build my house in a pond, then I deal with the water. I don't go to everybody else and ask them to deal with the water for it.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Poachman?
I was not sworn in, so I'd like to get sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the statements you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do. My name is John Poymon, I'm one of the trustees of Columbia Township. And I've been listening to the comments that were being made all day here. And first of all, let me explain. I've been a trustee for like three years, trying to deal with this very problem. There is no cooperation among any of these neighbors to solve this problem. This problem, I know, has been in existence for more than three years. I physically have seen this problem. All right, let me ask, answer a couple of questions, which goes. All right, there is a new house bill, and I believe it's 582, that's gonna give us, as a township, the right to go on people's property after we request them to clean and maintain their ditches. If they refuse that, we have the right to go on their property, clean the ditch, and assess them on our taxes. All right? Second of all, my understanding from soil and water, which does not coincide with this bill, was that there was gonna be a $30 maintenance charge for five acres of land. After the five acres of land, they were gonna be charged an additional $5 per acre.
A year?
A year. This bill, if you look at it, the, the assessment is well over $5, or well over that $30. Okay? There was additional proposals made to the neighbors of repairing those broken tiles. There was an additional plan that we talked to Mr. Holtzman about, about running an overflow soil through Mr. Roth's property. We talked about cleaning the ditch in the back. All of these things have been refused. The township has bent over backwards to try to help all these people that are being flooded. And, and these people say that their water runs to the ditch in the front of their house. It's exactly right, it does. But then that ditch goes down to the crossover pipe, or it goes down into the tile that is broken. All right, that is busted. It is smashed. I physically went back on the Dempsey property. Mr. Dempsey, our Mrs. Dempsey, allowed myself and my road foreman to go back and take a look at these holes. They're monstrous holes. She would not, or they would not allow anybody else on their property even to look at this. All right? The ditch in the back is silted, not tremendously deep, but it is silted. It doesn't need cleaning. All right? I think that the, the property is not in a floodplain. All right? The township is responsible for the ditches along the roads. We're willing to take care of those. All right, that's not a problem, we'll do that. We did propose that overflow ditch to Mr. Roth's property. All right? Figuring that if they didn't wanna repair that tile, we'd go that way. But then after Mr. Holtzman and I got together, we also found out that some of the properties along that existing tile have some of their end pipes from their septic system running into that tile. So consequently, when that tile gets plugged, that affluent, or the overflow from septic systems backs up. So even if we had the overflow ditch, we would still have to make repairs to them tiles because of the sewer, and lines. So I understand the people's concern about the cost. I would be too, if I owned a piece of property over there, I really would be. And I, I believe that you're telling me here that this is a high price, or a high estimate? I believe it is. I have talked to some of the contractors that live in our... I have talked to some of the contractors that live in our community and said that they probably could repair this pipe, replace this pipe, open the ditch for a lot less than ninety thousand dollars. If the neighbors would have gotten together with themselves and talked to these contractors as we have, as trustees have advised them to do, they could solve this problem very simply and be done within less than a week. They refuse to cooperate. I don't know, our hands are tied. The last meeting we had at the town hall, I said, that's it, I don't want to hear no more about this ditch. It's been going on for I don't know how many years. The trustees are washing their hands of it, we'll take care of our road problem, you work it out. Now they brought it to you, I'm leaving it in your hands, we will cooperate with every decision you make. But I wanted you to see a full and reasonable picture that this has been going on for a long, long time. And it does flood and it does stay. When I first got involved with it, it stayed for a day or two. Now it's staying for a week or two. All right?
Couple, three months.
Or even a couple of months. And I'll be honest with you, I've talked to Mr. Roth on and off for many, many months and I am really, really surprised and impressed that he is supporting this. All right, I really am. And he has probably the biggest bill. And he has really possibly, at this point in time, nothing to gain until it's completed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
If I might come up for a second time, Ed Meister again, 10685 Mitchell. Okay. Real quick, on the ditch, as we mentioned before, the ditch it actually flows, I think at the highest, at the deepest part it is, if I'm not mistaken, about six to ten feet deep. Is that correct? So that basically explains, that area to the north, that whole area, if that six to ten foot ditch would not be there, would be a large lake at times. And it was put in there years and years ago so that land could be drained and farmed. Now, as time goes on, the land has been parceled up and it no longer is farmed, there's no control over that ditch, the Roth family or whoever owned it at that time no longer maintains it because they're not farming it. And people have, that live on that, they don't care because it doesn't affect them. So what basically happened is everything parcels up gets smaller and smaller and nobody knows what's happening down the line. The problem is, you're seeing this all over the county. I think it's a countywide problem. I don't think it should be laid on a few people in this area. Everybody in the county, there should be some assessment for countywide drainage. And I don't know what that is, you figure that out, but it shouldn't come to, like me who drains maybe a half acre in there to pay a thousand dollars for this and fifty-seven dollars a month, a year to keep it up. I don't think that's the right figure. Okay? That's just maybe a little addition to all your other problems.
Thank you, Mr. Meister, we really appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I actually got involved in politics originally, I ran for city council because of an assessment. And it's a little clear cut because it was a road assessment. And we got charged a hundred, you know, per front footage. This is a little different, you're not even getting charged by acre, you're getting charged by how much, how many of your acres are benefited. And I don't know, I know I've seen the map and everything, but I really don't understand how they determine how many acres are actually benefited. To me, there's really two people that are benefiting the most and they're not even the ones that are getting charged the most. It's a difficult situation and I think we need to look at some of the other alternatives before we make a decision on this. I don't know that I'm ready to say yes or no on it right now. I know Mr. Roth said a detention basement, basin would not work, but I don't believe he's an engineer, I don't know what his job is, but I'd like to, engineers to look at that. And the other gentleman that offered to let us come and look at his tiles on his property, if some of these things, and force the people to clean their ditches, you know, make the tough decisions, get out there and tell them to do it, they don't do it, then go out there and do it for them and charge them for it. Fix, you know, if they're required to fix the tiles, fix the tiles, make them do it. But I have a hard time assessing, you know, somebody that's not having any problems at all. I mean, when I had the assessment on Oak Point Road, I had a prob, everybody had a problem, we're all, you know, hitting chuck holes, it was like riding on the moon. But I think we should look at other alternatives before we make a decision on this.
It's my sister, Kayla.
No comment currently.
Okay, we have a couple of options, we can make a decision today, yes or no. We can study the information and I think there was a lot of testimony given today and I personally would like an opportunity to review it further. We can also ask the engineer's office to look into a couple of the items and to give us a little bit more feedback. And then my question to Jerry Ennis is, since this is a public hearing, we have two options. We can continue the public hearing to another date, which is the choice of the board of commissioners, or we can close this public hearing and pick a date to make a decision. Am I correct on that?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so the decision about how to proceed is up to the board.
Before we do that, can we have another way of doing the assessments other than the way that you've proposed here by acres and benefits? I mean, I think if you split it all up equally, it would be like three thousand something. If everybody paid the same amount.
Typically by statute, these are, you assess by the benefit.
It has to be this particular way?
Yeah, I don't know, Jerry, can you just do a straight line per each benefit? I don't know if you could do that in this case.
The law is that you're supposed to do it on the basis of the proportion of the benefit to the property, so...
Right, but majority of the people here, all but two, are saying they're getting absolutely no benefit. So how can you assess them if they're not getting a benefit?
If I could say, the basis of benefit in this case is the amount of, you take the way the land slopes and the amount of their land that drains into that ditch is basically how you determine their benefit. So I mean, for them to say it's backlands and, you know, it currently drains in there currently and they have no problem, so they're saying they have no benefit, but their water still drains into that improvement or did, so they by law do have a benefit.
Billy, you need to talk into your microphone.
They do, they would have a benefit even though they don't perceive it as an improvement to the benefit they have, so...
So this is the only way we can do an assessment if we were to do so?
Well, I guess I have to defer a little bit to the engineers. Again, you have to do it on the basis of benefit and, you know, there are a lot of extremely complicated legal issues and I've kind of avoided your previous question, you know, about asking, can people block private ditches and what can you do? I don't want to start making comments that affect private rights here, but, because you get all kinds of things. If a private ditch is built, you know, you have a right to fill it in and take it out the next day, but then you get things where you get prescriptive easements, people come to rely, you allow people to tie in and use it, and you get all kinds of laws about prescriptive rights, reliance and that sort of thing. So that's why it is just so impossible to, you know, I didn't, there was another gentleman that asked about that and I didn't mean to be evasive to you, but it, I don't want to start making comments that affect or declare the private rights of people here today. And I understand what some of these people are saying, but, you know, this was a public improvement made in eighteen seventy or something and probably just about everybody that bought their property, bought their property knowing that that public improvement was there and that someday that public improvement was going to have to be fixed. So I'm just trying to say there's a, there's a lot of counterbalancing issues here. And again, we're all trying to deal with the fact that the law back then didn't provide for assessments so that we could build a fund. So we're trying to fix a defect in the law a long time ago, but, and I know-
Do you have additional?
Attorney Tallis, he was probably aware that the law regarding water rights and flows and everything is just unbelievably complicated.
These assessments would be over a thirty-year period? Is that how they?
I don't think so, it's usually twenty, isn't it?
Or twenty?
If it's twenty, you have a right to pay it upfront or over twenty years.